Welcome to Vitaminozi. I'm Joanna Weiss.
And I'm Whitney Gomez. Every week we bring you your recommended dose of civics and civilization in Orange County. And today, we are so honored to have with us Vice Chair Katrina Foley from the Orange County Board of Supervisors. Thank you for joining us.
Love to be here. Thanks for having me.
I want to remind our listeners of your storied political career here in Orange County. 21 years of service, Vice Chair Foley. Thank you on behalf of our listeners and all the voters in Orange County. You were in six elections from 2020 to 2022, and you are serving right now as Vice Chair of the Orange County Board of Supervisors. You represent District Five. You were previously elected to represent District Two. You were elected to Mayor of Costa Mesa in 2020 after being elected in 2018. You served for 14 years on the Costa Mesa City Council, including two years of mayor, quite a lot of service to Costa Mesa. And before that, you were on the Newport Mesa Unified Board for four years. You're an attorney. You're the president of the Foley Group. And thank you for taking the time to join our listeners and us today.
Thank you. I love being here. I'm excited that you two have started this podcast. I think it's great for our community. Everyone could use a little dose of civics.
Well, thank you so much for coming. And I've been proud to support you for many years. One of the ways that we have really bonded is, I think, supporting women candidates and supporting women generally in Orange County. WAVE, the group that I founded, Women for American Values and Ethics, was proud to support you in many of those races. And you have been a leader and a champion for the community, for our families in Orange County, and especially women. So, thank you for that. We have one of our first questions on what you do.
Okay, what do I do? Well, first, let me thank you, Joanna. I will say this. The very first time I learned about postcarding was through WAVE. And it was when I was running for the special election for the County Board of Supervisors. And the WAVE women joined forces and they all started postcarding for me. So, thank you. What do I do? So, people always ask me that. I can't tell you how many times I will be introducing myself. I'm the county supervisor. Oh, who do you supervise? Well, not really anyone. But we do supervise, like, the CEO and our county council. But overall, the county enjoys a $10.8 billion budget. That's billion with a B. And we are the ninth strongest economy in America. We are charged with overseeing that budget. Now, you think, oh, wow, you're really wealthy. Well, the problem is, is that 88% of that budget comes from the state and federal government. So, we only get a little portion of our budget that we have flexibility over to use at our discretion specifically for Orange County. All of the other programs did our state mandated programs. We oversee the county's $10.8 billion budget. We also have 22 departments and nearly 19,000 employees that we oversee. We cover the airport, the Sheriff's Department, the District Attorney, the public defender. We maintain and staff the courts, especially the security in the courts. We make sure that our beautiful county parks remain pristine open spaces that are clean and safe. We have our harbors. And we have three harbors: Dana Point Harbor, which I am privileged to be able to represent, that is being revitalized; Newport Harbor, which is kind of a combo, public-private harbor; and then Huntington Beach Harbor also. That's a little bit smaller of an area. We are responsible for the safety net for vulnerable residents, for anyone who is on CalFresh and needing a food, which there are many, for our CalOptima and Medi-Cal recipients. We have the eligibility workers who process those applications. And we have many. I mean, people don't realize. Yes, we're a wealthy county, and everyone thinks of Orange County as this very expensive place. But we have a lot of poverty here as well. There's a big pay gap disparity, and there's a disparity in economics for our residents. And we also cover homelessness and housing. And then, of course, we are responsible for environmental health and our healthcare agency for the public health of the community. So, Public Works, Transportation, I mean, we cover the whole gamut of public services.
You mentioned the $10.8 billion budget for our county. You have a large office that helps support your work in the district. Can you tell us a little bit about the office?
Of our $10.8 billion budget, or about 88% of that is covering state mandated programs, state or federal, mostly state. And so, the county discretionary budget, the amount that we can use in departments or in our district offices, is much smaller. We can probably take about half of the balance for discretionary funding. And so, each board office is allocated funding that covers their salaries and benefits. And in each board office, we have 11 staff members that we can fund. Then, we also have some funding that we are allocated for community projects. A minimum is $220,000 a year that we get allocated that we can use for community grants. I support all of our chambers for small business development in the Fifth District. I've used our community grant funding to support grad nights or to buy meal boxes for those who are struggling, or even a grocery gift card or gas cards when we were seeing gas prices increase. I've been a huge advocate to try to reduce the cost of gas during the last couple of years. We're allocated additional funds because of American Rescue Plan funds that were allocated during the pandemic. And so, for those offices that got those funds, we used them in a whole different variety of ways. You know, we had one supervisor who's going to prison because he took $10 million and used it for his own personal benefit, bought his daughter a house, paid off his credit card bills and his property taxes. I didn't do that. I invested $1.5 million in housing for domestic violence victims and to create new apartments for them. I invested funding into building parks and building a café to help create revenue to support parks. I mean, I tried to invest our dollars in a meaningful way that would have great community-wide benefit. That's how we get allocated funds. And then, each board office works with the departments, Public Works, Parks, the Public Protection Departments, the Environmental Health Departments. And they talk about different initiatives that they might want supported through each of those departments through the Capital Improvement Project program. And so, for example, we have $700 million in deferred maintenance for the airport that is coming forward. Things like renewing the escalators and the elevators and the baggage claims and redoing the tarmac, creating a new concessions plan, adding a playground for kids while parents are there with them stuck at the airport so they have something fun to do. A nursing station, which is like, you know, near and dear to my heart, because I know as a mom who nursed, that sometimes you just need a place to go, right? We are investing $40 million to repair Laguna Canyon Road, underground utilities, and make that road safer. We are investing in our libraries. We've got investments in trails. We are investing $4 million in the Costa Mesa Bridge Shelter to create more treatment beds and to provide more services for individuals who have addiction and drug-induced psychosis so that they can move from the shelter into a treatment bed environment where they can stay there until they can transition to permanent supportive housing. So, that's how we focus on the priorities in our budget in our office. And each district is able to do how they want within the limited means that we're available.
That's amazing.
I found it counterintuitive when Janet Winn left the State Senate to run for supervisor. Can you talk to us about the hierarchy of city, county, state assembly, state senate?
Yeah, it's not intuitive, right? So, until I got this job, I would have thought that it would be like a more influential job if you were in the state government or in Congress. But the fact of the matter is, as a county supervisor, you are sort of like the governor of your district. You have a lot of flexibility, independence. I never really knew that before I ran for county supervisor. You get to make decisions, working with each of the different departments. They sort of defer first to the county supervisor. And if the county supervisor for that area doesn't want to do something that the department is planning, then you have an opportunity to kind of change it up before it goes to the full board. And sometimes it doesn't even go to the full board, right? So, it's a lot more, in my opinion, on-the-ground influence. Now, some people like the cachet of, well, I'm a congressperson. And now, in our climate right now, being a congressperson isn't just about your area. It's about saving democracy, right? So, it's a little different. So, those are very important jobs for our country right now. But the Congress, the federal government, the state government, they create the programs from a policy standpoint. And then, at the county, we get to implement. And I'm an implementer, so I just love this job.
Clearly, you clearly love your job. Can you talk to us about a couple of the most pressing issues facing District Five?
Yeah, so I would say we have probably three top priorities, and then there's a bunch of other subsets, right? So, something that we spend a lot of our time working on is going to be surprising to you, but it is sand. And sand on our beaches. Our coastal economy is critical to the overall Orange County economy. We represent a third of the Orange County economy because of people coming to visit the beaches. And then, they go shopping, they stay in the hotels. You know, it drives our economy. So, sand is an economic driver. So, I've been learning a lot about sand, how sand travels along the coast, what interferes with sand travel, and how do we get more sand on our beaches so that we could create a nice big buffer to protect our coastal rail as well. So, that's one big priority I've worked on. I was able to help secure $300 million to bring sand to our beaches and to protect our coastal rail. Really honored to be able to do that good work and partner with the community on that work. We're starting a sand coalition. We call it a beaches coalition that will have stakeholders so we can start planning so that we repair our beaches, just like we repair our roads. And we don't just wait till the beach erodes and then say, oh, my gosh, we're out of sand. What are we gonna do? You know, it takes a long time to get sand. So, we have to have a plan. The second priority for the district is, of course, public safety. And safety comes in many forms. And for our district, wildfire safety is a big priority. Of course, safety in the neighborhoods, whether it's e-bike safety. We had to create an ordinance at the county level to address e-bikes. When I first got elected, that was the top safety priority. Everybody was complaining about e-bikes, especially in Ladera Ranch. They would say, there's gangs of e-bikes. And I thought they were joking at first, but no, they were serious. It was like the Lord of the Flies kids with e-bikes.
Are you on Nextdoor?
I am not on Nextdoor.
You should not be on Nextdoor.
I am not on Nextdoor.
Because it's all e-bikes all the time.
I know, I know. I mean, technically, we are on Nextdoor. I just don't look at it.
What a great community we're among, though, if that's the top safety concern.
First world problems. But we also have, of course, safety as it relates to individuals who are experiencing homelessness, who are drug addicted, and who are maybe mentally ill, could be drug-induced psychosis, could be mental illness in other forms, schizophrenia, et cetera. So, safety is a big priority. Number three for our district is, of course, our economy. Our coastal economy is critical to the economy of the county, of the state of California, and, as it turns out, America. Because, of course, Orange County is a donor county to the state, and the state of California is a donor county to, I mean, donor state to America. We give more than we give back. We're pretty much funding all the other states. So, that's kind of how Orange County is as well. Within all those priorities are certainly subsets of issues depending on the community. You know, we're 14 communities strong. I live in Costa Mesa, so I'm very familiar with the needs of Costa Mesa. But the district travels all the way down the coast to San Clemente. And so, what's important in San Juan, in Dana Point, is different than what's important in Irvine, Newport, or Costa Mesa, or even Elisa Viejo. So, we have to try to really address the needs. I do that by working with the elected officials. I ask them every quarter for a wish list of either issues or infrastructure projects or community projects that you want us to support. I help write letters in support of legislation or of funding and, you know, really try to engage with our local area as much as possible.
2022, when you were elected again in the general election, you were brought in with Vincent Sarmiento, who joined you on the Board of Supervisors, giving the Democrats the first majority on the board since 1980, I believe, with Doug Chaffee. But he also often sides with the Republican on the Board of Supervisors. Can you talk a little bit about the political dynamics within the board and how you navigate those?
If you were to go back and review all of our votes over the last four years that I've sat on the County Board of Supervisors, I think what you'll see, it's more about personalities and actions with a particular board member for Mr. Chaffee than it is about anything else, right? He used to always side with Andrew Doe when Andrew Doe was on the board. They were like inseparable, right? And now, he tends to lean more towards supporting Vince Sarmiento. I honestly opt in the swing vote because I am not in a box. This is regional government. I try to focus on the issues that a consensus of the voters, of the residents, care about. And it doesn't always fall along partisan party lines. I mean, there's more times often than not in the last couple of months where I'm voting with Supervisor Winn and Wagner, who are the two Republicans on the board, than I'm voting with Doug Chaffee and Vince Sarmiento, who are the two Democrats. And sometimes, it's really about safety when it comes to public safety. I tend to be more law enforcement oriented. When it comes to supports for economics and for funding for social services, safety net programs, I tend to lean more towards Vince and Doug. So, I'm just not in a box, you know? When it comes to my priorities and my personal ideologies, I might seem libertarian as it relates to individual rights, women's rights, civil rights, you know, let me be free, right? But when it comes to protections of our community, and again, what I refer to as the safety net for our community, for the most vulnerable residents, seniors, children, disabled individuals, people who have mental health concerns, that's where I lean into, you know, we need to fund that. It's better for our society if we take care of the people who can't take care of themselves. I mean, that's our moral obligation. And I feel like in the long run, when you do that, the county, the state, the country is going to be better and stronger. Because those individuals, especially children, who we invest in early, they're gonna pay it back to us. I mean, I am a living example of that. I was on the Free Head Start Program, myself and my siblings. I was on the Free Lunch Program all the way up until my senior year in high school. I got a Pell Grant to go to UCLA. And so, I can assure you that the taxes that my husband and I have paid over the last couple of years have more than covered that investment. That investment that did so much to fuel my brain every day so that I could learn, that investment that did so much to give me an educational opportunity. You know, nobody in my family had gone to like a big university. We didn't even know how to do it. I was lucky to have Mr. Umholtz, who was my AP Calculus teacher and who happened to have graduated from UCI and was the water polo coach and the swim coach. And I was on the swim team. He says, Katrina, how come you haven't applied to school yet? And this is well past March, right? And I said, oh, it's in September. Don't you apply there? You know, I didn't know. And so, he helped me to get, you know, going and to understand what we needed to do. So, that investment in children is really critical, and it's a big priority for me. And that's where you're gonna see me lean more, what I think people might consider traditionally Democrat, when it comes to women's reproductive rights. I'm squarely in the Democrat camp.
So, our national landscape has changed a lot politically since the time that you first took office, say, 20 years ago. Can you talk about some of the changes that you've seen within Orange County with your 20 years of service and any way that it's been impacted by the federal national elections?
Yeah, so definitely changes. What's really scary to me is, and we've been talking a lot about this lately, those of us who were in Costa Mesa, in Costa Mesa politics, and the kind of messaging, the philosophical ideology about immigrants, the government is bad and all government should be abolished ideology, we need to cut spending, that messaging, when we all know that's actually not happening, they're spending in a different way, right? Everybody needs to take care of themselves. We shouldn't be taking care of people, right? That messaging all started like in the 2000s in Costa Mesa. In that time period, we were seeing candidates messaging around a lot of the points that are now the people that are running our government. We were able to stave off those individuals moving up, but apparently, there were other roads to get to the top, right? And so, I do think that it is a little scary to me because I don't think that's Orange County. As an example, in Orange County, Kamala Harris won District Five by five votes, okay? Five votes. If I had been on the ballot at the same time, I probably would have beat Kamala Harris in District Five. What does that tell you? That tells you that even in an R-plus-five district, which District Five is, you see that it's more educated. It's more moderate mainstream in terms of who do they want to lead the country. I think people care about safety. You know, they care about the businesses and having support for their business. And they just want their community to be a beautiful, you know, protected community. And so, I think that the climate has changed in Orange County. More Democrats have certainly been elected. When I first got elected in 2004, we just had a Congresswoman, Loretta Sanchez. She was our Congresswoman. She was the only Democrat. Now, we have five of the six congressional are Democrats. And certainly, we have a lot of our state representatives are Democrats. There's tons of Democrats sitting on city councils, school boards, water districts, sanitation districts across the county. People are starting to learn that you're gonna elect the person, right? Elect the person that you want to lead you. And maybe we don't need to be focused so much, especially at the local level, on whether they're a Democrat or Republican. We need to focus on, are they a good governance person? Do they care about the community? Will they be responsive to my needs? Do they listen? Are they willing to change their mind? You know, you have to be willing to change your mind sometimes because if the community is just like outraged about something and you're deciding you want to put that road there, maybe that's not a good idea.
That's what makes you such a great governance person and great elected.
I think it's also hard because, you know, we talk about this a lot. Everyone's like, oh, you should run for Congress. And in my mind, oh, my gosh, I can't think of a worse job right now. Because I would feel like I'm not able to accomplish anything. And I really want to deliver results to people every day. So, that's one reason why I just love this job.
It's, again, very clear that you love your job. In the wake of January 6 and the political assassinations in Minnesota, violence in the political sphere has come to the forefront. How has that changed over your time serving? And how does that affect you personally?
Yeah, it's very different. So, I talked about growing up in Costa Mesa in my political career, right? You know, those were, there's a part-time little gig in Costa Mesa. And you wouldn't expect people to protest you or come to your home or anything. But by the time we were dealing with January 6, we had already seen a movement forming where it was no longer just individuals coming to the podiums in civic centers. It was individuals going to elected officials' and public officials' homes and protesting them at their home, invading their privacy, invading their neighborhood in a way that I'd never seen before. And it was, I thought, a negative evolution of politics, not something we should support or encourage. Because it's hard to get people to do these jobs, right? It's a lot of sacrifice on your family. You can't go anywhere without somebody asking you a question about, you know, what's happening with the park? Why are the fish dead in the lake? You know, whatever the issue is, right? And you can't go anywhere. So, to then layer that with people coming to your home, that is just unacceptable. So, what I saw when I was mayor during COVID is I started getting some of these people who actually were in the January 6 insurrection, who went to prison because of the January 6 insurrection. They were at my house, protesting at my house. We have video attacking my kids, yelling at us. It was very scary for my grandma because she'd never seen anything like that. Then, we move into the county supervisor position, and the tension is a lot higher. I actually had to get a restraining order against an individual who had contacted our office and said he was going to go to my house and shoot me up. And what we're seeing is a degradation of civics, right? It's no longer just about, I have the right to express my position. I'm gonna go talk to my government and share my position. It's, I'm gonna share my position, and then I'm going to attack you in a very personal vulgar way using profanity and disgusting images. You have to just sit there and listen and endure it. And by the way, this is supposed to be like a family-friendly channel kids are watching, and here we are. Is this really American politics now? I don't know. I think it's not good. It's not a good course we're on. And I'm an anti-cursing person. And I know, you know, some people don't like that. But I personally think that if you're an educated human and you're taught to use your words, just like I told my kids when they were growing up, use your words. There's a lot of great words that can describe how you feel without using the F-bomb.
Right. Switching gears to economics a little bit, which I know is something that you have always been very concerned about for Orange County families. Can you talk with us about the impact that you expect the big beautiful bill to have on Orange County and in particular District Five?
Yeah, well, as we were walking in the door here today, I got yet another email where we have 2,800 senior residents, seniors that are very much older adults who rely on what's called CalFresh. That's the food benefits. They get an EBT card, and they can use that to buy food and necessities. 800 are losing their benefits as a result of this bill. And maybe that doesn't seem like a lot of people, when you have 3.2 million people, 2,800 here. Last week, we heard of, you know, another 2,300 over there. A couple weeks ago, we learned that we're gonna see $159 million in cuts to our eligibility worker program. Those are the individuals who process applications for benefits. So, we're concerned about this greatly. I don't even understand the motive. Why are you taking food from seniors who can't buy food and they're on fixed incomes? And they're not gonna go get a job. I mean, where are they gonna get a job? They don't even have the ability to get a job in some cases. Maybe they're disabled or cognitively because of their age, they can't hold down a job. And besides that, they already worked. And now, they're retired or they, you know, they're on Social Security. Why are we doing this to our seniors? Are we supposed to take care of that generation so that they can rest and enjoy, you know, the end of life? I don't understand causing them the anxiety and the stress. And I'll tell you, my grandma two months ago passed. She was 98. She lived through the Great Depression. She lived through the recession. She's lived through COVID. She's lived through a lot in this country. And she, she still, because of living through the Great Depression, she was a saver. She saved everything. If you used a plastic bag, she would save it. If there was a container that she could reuse, she would save it. She was the consummate repurpose recycle well before it was trendy. But she also was always had this anxiety about food. And so, I worry what we're doing in terms of not just eliminating the funding so that the seniors can buy food, but also causing them so much stress and anxiety. So, yeah, we're looking at a lot of cuts. We're looking at cuts that range from anywhere from $500 million to $1 billion.
One of the big concerns that many of us have is the fairness of elections. And I know the Orange County Supervisor oversees the Board of Registered Voters. Can you talk about elections in Orange County and how you feel about the fairness and the outlook there?
I am confident in our registrar voters. We have an incredible team, and we are a model for how to run smooth, fair, accessible elections across America. And we have been for many, many years. So, whether you are a voter who wants to vote by mail, or you wanna vote and drop yours in a convenient drop box, or you prefer to go into a voting center before or on Election Day, we are trying to make our system accessible for all so that more people vote. We have, right now, a series of community workshops that are going on. They've been highly promoted, and they're happening in all different cities across the county. And the fact that at every one of these community workshops, maybe a handful of people show up, I'm gonna say the most I saw show up was maybe 25 people. What does that tell you? That tells you that the voters overall believe that our system is working. And the district attorney has indicated, there's only been, as far as I understand, one case that was prosecuted for election fraud. And that is- And that is a case where the person was not eligible to vote because they did not have current citizenship in this country. And they actually self-reported. And then he ended up working a plea deal with this individual, and they've been removed from the voter rolls. There's 16 other individuals who were also removed from the voter rolls who self-reported. And I have a theory. People ask me, well, what do you mean they self-reported? How did they know? Why did they think they were on there in the first place? I think what has happened in California at the DMV, when you register for your license, I think you're automatically getting registered to vote. And there's a box you have to check if you don't want to register or if you can't register. And I think there's maybe needs to be some tightening up there. Because I know, just as an example, one of my children, when he renewed his driver's license, it changed his party registration. And we had to go and change it back because the mail came. I'm like, wait, what is this?
That's a surprise.
I know. So that was just because it defaulted to a particular party registration, not his.
So you've been running in districts and in areas that have Republicans and Democrats for 20 years. And in some of those races, even a majority of Republicans. And you've been able to build bipartisan coalitions to get elected time and time again. For national Democrats who have been losing races, would you have any suggestions for them or any policies that you think we should be leaning into as Democrats to try to win again?
Campaign like a mayor. I mean, that's the best advice I can give. I give this advice to everybody who asks, run like a mayor. Mayors, what do they, what do they run on? They run on issues that impact the local community, issues that impact you at your front door. Stop running on these campaigns that everything is so nebulous. No one knows what you're talking about. You know, run on issues like cost of living. How do we reduce the price of goods if you're running in a state or congressional? How do we make the neighborhoods safer? How do we make sure to prevent wildfires in our communities? How do we respond with the local law enforcement in a way that's compassionate but effective so that we have safe neighborhoods? So I think you have to run like a mayor. And I will say, I've only won one election where the seat I was running for had more Democrats at that time than Republicans. And that was in 2020.
Incredible. Okay, let's leave politics behind and let's talk about food. What's your favorite meal in Orange County? What restaurant recommendations do you have for our listeners?
Okay, well, my favorite meal in life is life-giving soup that my husband makes me. It is like every vegetable you can imagine, all in a big pot. And I love that soup during the, the fall or when I just need to little feel better. So that's my favorite meal of all time. But when it comes to restaurants, I mean, we have so many options here in the fifth district. We are Michelin star friendly, let's just say. A couple of highlights in Costa Mesa at South Coast Plaza is Knife Pleet. This is one of my favorite restaurants. But you have to like save your money for a couple of months to afford the meal. It's definitely for special occasions. The owners are local Costa Mesa residents. And Chef Tony is from France, so you're getting the real deal if you enjoy French cuisine and a beautiful pairing of the most amazing wines that really do just absolutely match the meal that you're having or the appetizer or the dessert. So I would highly recommend it. It's in the third level at South Coast Plaza. My go-to every week is, of course, Wahoo's, another family-owned business. I probably have Wahoo's too much every week, but my fish tacos with little cabbage slaw, trés slaw, is my favorite. And of course, you got to add the guacamole with that.
In 1980, in 1983 taco style?
And, you know, Ed Lee and Wing Lam and their family started Wahoo's. And they're actually going to be at the airport here now soon for the first time, which is exciting. They were entered into our county Hall of Fame last year. And then a new restaurant that I just learned about, again, it's a, it's kind of a specialty, like if you have a special occasion to go to. My husband and I enjoyed our 34th wedding anniversary the other night, on July 27th, visited the dock, and that's in Newport. And it's literally right on a dock, and it's open air. You're sitting there with the water, you know, boaters going by, a bunch of Duffy boats. Even you could take an electric boat right up to the dock and beautiful food, delicious, great service. I really enjoyed it. And then you can walk around Lido, and it's a lovely evening.
Great. Thank you for those recommendations.
The amount of work that you've done for our community is really spectacular. And I know so many people are grateful for the way that you've stepped into this role and really just helped shape the county.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Foley, we can't thank you enough for being here with us. You are so knowledgeable about the district, and you just roll up your sleeves and get in there. And we really appreciate all that you do for us here in Orange County.
Thank you. I appreciate being here and giving me the opportunity to share about some of the work that we do because it's meaningful work, work that not only is benefiting the community, but is enjoyable to do. I love solving problems, and this job gives me lots of opportunity for that.
Well, we're so glad that you're in the role. We're so glad that you were here today. Thank you for all you do. And to our listeners, thank you for joining us for your recommended dose of civics and civilization in Orange County.
We'll see you next time on Vitamin OC.